Hello and welcome to Committee of the Oron Block Grant Advisory Special Meeting for today, April 22nd. Let's have Raul Cup, please.
Sure. Committee members, Armenian is absent. Ramirez?
Here.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avadisian?
Here.
And Chair Garibian?
Here.
The agenda for the April 22nd, 2019 Special Meeting of the CDVG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Friday, April 19, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item 2 is minutes at A approval of the minutes of the February 22nd, 2019, CDVG Advisory Committee Special Meeting.
I had a question. On the approval and the interviews that we conducted, didn't we have a couple that were withdrawn and we didn't interview?
Committee member Ramirez, we did. The YWCA withdrew their proposal for a social services project, as well as the YMCA withdrawing a proposal.
Because I noticed that it said zero in the allocation column, but it might be interpreted as that we didn't give them anything.
It should state that it is canceled. The proposal was canceled and withdrawn.
And I didn't see that in the minutes. Can you add that? Then I move the minutes be approved as amended.
Second.
Raul Cup.
Committee members, Armenian absent. Ramirez?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avadisian?
Yes.
Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Item 3, action items at A, report regarding release of CDVG funding allocations for fiscal year 2019-20 from Housing and Urban Development, HUD. One is committee to deliberate and approve additional CIP funding recommendations. Good afternoon, Chair Garibian, members of the committee. Staff has prepared a report for you regarding the release of the final HUD allocations for the CDVG program. These numbers were released over a week ago on April 12th. We have a PowerPoint presentation ready for you to give you a background and refresh your memories on the timeline. So as you recall, we had originally estimated $1.8 million in CDVG allocations for the city of Glendale. The CDVG Advisory Committee back in February 22nd made a motion to return for an additional meeting if the final HUD allocation increased more than $25,000 for our capital improvement projects, and if it increased more than $10,000 for our public social services projects. And in fact, they both did increase. The original estimate is up there. It was $1.8 million. We were pretty close. The actual allocation is $1,879,314. Today, you will be making recommendations on a little under the $79,000, and I'll get to that right now. So here is a breakdown of the additional allocation in CDVG funding. We have an additional $79,314, 20% of which goes to administration and program costs, which is $15,863. 15% of that is social services, which you will be making recommendations on today of $11,898, and capital improvement projects, which again, you'll be making recommendations on at $51,554. If you notice, the city projects are zero. You will only be making recommendations on the community agency projects that were submitted in December. Here is the total breakdown of funds. The $1.8, $1,879,000, again, you'll see the administration is about $375,000, bringing up social services to about $281,897. Capital improvement projects are going to be at $1.2 million. And if you see the breakdown, the city projects are getting about 48% of that, and the community projects will be receiving 52% of that at $631,554. Any questions on that before we begin deliberations?
It seems that for social programs, that instead of the $10,000 that we were thinking, it's $11,000?
It's, yes. It's $11,897 total that you will be...
It's almost close to what we were thinking, huh? And then another clarification, and I think a member of the public asked me, and I kind of heard it reiterated at a council, at a housing meeting, about the funds from the block grants can, especially for capital improvement, can only be used for public projects and not for city projects. And that's not my understanding or our practice in the past. Can you explain actually what that...
Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, committee member Ramirez, basically every year, the city council has made a recommendation that city set aside projects be considered, and they're done, they're pre-designated, and they're considered ahead of time. And we allocate that around, we don't make the allocation when we come up with project ideas in November, and it comes to the CDVG committee, and you approve that, as we had done with the Pacific Park Artificial Turf Project, for instance. And of course, the Section 108 loan, which is, it's a loan repayment. We have really no, we can't do much with it. We have to pay that back. Other than that, the rest of that funding will go to community projects.
But the city is entitled to get projects?
Absolutely, yes. And that is a council directive.
Yeah, okay. That clarifies that.
Another question? I think, are we at the, we have some oral communication cards, so anybody else cards, or this is it? This is everybody? I have first up Armand Gorgorian.
Chair Garibian, would you like to give direction as to how much time is allotted?
I have only three cards. I think we already, same projects, oh, we have one. It's the same project, so I think three minutes.
Oh, it's more than enough.
More than enough, so three minutes.
Chairman Garibian, members of the committee, my name is Armand Gorgorian from Home Management. I went over the additional funds that are available, and because we thought that there's a lot of good projects out there, and we were not ready to propose something new. We could have added on the computer, on the HVAC units, which we have approval for seven units, but we thought that we will withdraw and don't ask any additional funds so that others can use that.
Oh. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any questions, any comments?
I'll just make a comment. Thank you. Thank you for Home Management doing that. I think some other organizations will be more happier that they can complete their projects. Very good. Thank you.
Next up, I have Lieutenant Jennifer Shifte.
Chair Garibian, I believe that's for the next item. Is that for social services?
It's for social services.
I'm not sure if you have another one for capital improvement projects, Catholic charities. Is it for...
That's social services. I think everything else is social services.
Is it for social services?
Yeah. All right, please. You want to do it all one shot now? So we don't have to have them go...
It's up to you.
Let's have them all one shot now, so if they want to choose to leave or stay. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again in front of you. Upon learning the information of the available funds, of course, we became excited and also hopeful. Upon learning the amount that was projected that we would receive, we knew that we would not be able to increase the services to children this year. And so I also want to share with you, from the time that we submitted the application, we learned that we did not receive a renewal on the grant from the LA County Probation Department in the sum of $89,928. That was a loss to us this year. So I'm at a point where I'm not able to grow the program into the teen program that we additionally proposed, but rather, we're at a point where we need to try and save this program. So the ZONE After School Program at the Salvation Army is in need of funding. We have searched and searched, and we're applying for grants, but the news of the increased funds available to us makes us hopeful that the CDVG will be able to help increase what we've received so that we can continue to maintain and increase the services that we provide to the kids. Thank you.
Any questions?
Could we ask questions? What, good afternoon, first of all. Thank you for being here. Based on what funds you've received, what do you think comparing to what we have available, what do you think that is sufficient enough funds that, I know no dollar amount is enough, ever. However, based on this amount, what do you think if we are to share the funds with some other organizations, what would be the fair amount that you think you can make it work with the program?
So this past year, in the amount that we received, our agreement was to serve 100 children. We will be able to do that with the amount received last year. With the decrease in funding for this year, and knowing that there's an opportunity for more funding, and an additional $8,000 would allow us to increase our services to 110 children for an after-school program this year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you partner with the school district at all?
Yes. I've had several meetings with the principals. We're working hard with them to try and continue our services in the afternoon, making sure that we're offering something not only that they don't provide, so that there's a new opportunity for the children, but also something that we do provide in expanding on their education. Our after-school coordinator works closely with the students. Between 85% to 90% of our children are below grade level, and so we're in collaboration with their teachers, making sure that we're providing tutoring and the essentials that they need to at least be able to come up to grade level.
And your students do come from the designated census tract?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know why they cut your funding?
No. I have sent certified mail. I've made phone calls. Other than knocking on their front door, I've not been able to get a response. I can tell you that the jurisdiction had a leadership change, and so it could just be simply as passions changed and the funding changed. I don't have an answer. I've been unable to accomplish a response from the County Probation Department.
So by not having that, you don't have a replacement of that in any other way? So...
I do not have a replacement.
The number of kids automatically is cut until next year?
I have not cut any children yet. I'm running in a deficit, trying hard to work to make this program happen.
You can let the program go until the next year? Okay. Thank you.
I'll answer the hard questions to my boss.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Talar Antabdiyan.
Good afternoon. My name is Talar. I'm here on behalf of Armenian Relief Society Social Services. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the committee for its recommendation to our agency for the coming fiscal year. I did want to express concern that our agency was faced with a 23% funding cut in the new fiscal year, and I'm hopeful that the committee would reconsider that to increase the amount. We attended the public hearing last month, and with a large number of Glendale residents and senior citizens who actively participate in our ESL classes and through our social services programs, they also voiced their concern about the funding cut. We're hopeful that by increasing the amount, we'll be able to keep both levels of ESL classes, as well as the full scope of services that our case manager provides. So we're hopeful that you would reconsider that amount for an increase.
Well, I'll start. On your ESL classes, is that for adults?
This is for older adults, senior citizens, ESL Life Skills classes. We offer them on two levels twice a week.
Okay. And then in the past, you've always partnered with Catholic Charities, and that continues?
Yes, yeah, we collaborate with a number of community organizations in Glendale, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Said Hamidi?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for giving us the chance. And of course, I would like to thank the committee and the CDVG all team for approving our initial proposal. I'm not here to ask for anything extra, but just to help us in implementing our program as we are doing it. As you know, to the financials for CDVG and as well CIP, we were approved for lesser amounts than...
Sorry, for your record, who are you representing?
Oh, Said Hamidi from Catholic Charities, Loves and Fishes Program. I would say, on the social services side of the program, this, through the help of CDVG, we were able to run my Loves and Fishes Program, which is just a food pantry, as a full-scale community center and case management program. And however, fundings that we're going to get, we're going to be able to serve more clients who are homeless clients, and also the homeless prevention part of it. So as you know, the budget, the initial budget that we requested, it was approved less than 50%. So any extra recommendations that the committee are going to give us, we're going to help us to run the program smarter. And for the capital improvement programs, of course, initial proposal, the basic things that we requested due to the lack of funding is the changing the disability and the handicap sites of the, adding handicap reliable things to our, that includes a ramp, rails, and working inside the facility with the paints and security systems. Now that our center is very vulnerable, as we had assessment to the LA County and Glendale PD's assessment program, they established and they provided recommendations, like whatever we are proposing to have on our facility, including cameras, the gates that we need to change, the ramps, everything is that we require to do it anyways. So any help from the CDVG group, of course, it will help a lot. Any questions?
Okay, I'll start. In other words, you're asking for additional funding for capital improvements, if possible?
Yes.
As well as social?
The social services, yes.
Okay, very good. Keep that in mind.
Same question I asked earlier from Salvation Army. What would you do when, how much of funds, based on the capital improvement funds, that if we were to share it with another organization, what number you see that is going to work to do the basics of what you just mentioned and some of the security measures that you have to improve?
As per the initial approval for the CIP program, we have to bring those adjustments to our center in order to be compliant with the regulations and the codes, and compliance with the city codes and the LA County. And also, we want the center to be more facilitated for the staff. So as everything else, of course, we have to do it anyways. That would cut the amounts from our services programs, and we, of course, the more amount we spend on the construction will be the less amount we're going to do on the case management side of it.
So no particular dollar amount that you think will cover some of your...
I would say the more the better, but I won't be able to cut anything particular on the dollar amounts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
No more cards? Okay, so close the communication. Okay, let's move on.
Can I make a comment? I noticed that at the beginning of the meeting, you alerted the audience that if they were speaking to items on the agenda, that they should get a card. And on the agenda, it says about oral communications, not agenda items. So could we have a clarification on that on the agenda? So that there's two opportunities for public comment, and one to agenda items, and another non-agenda items?
Yes, absolutely. Chair Garibian, committee member Ramirez, there are two opportunities for the public to speak, or two different types of opportunities. One is during the items on the agenda, like the ones that we just took now. And so that's a public comment, period.
That's not on the agenda, though. I don't see it.
During each agenda item, members of the public have an opportunity?
Where does it say that?
It doesn't say it on the agenda. That is just common practice.
Well, I think that...
That is how the city council does it. That is how every committee and commission does it in the city. And so...
But why did you have to give instructions for people to go out and get a card and turn it in if they were going to speak on agenda items? And I looked at it, and it says, "If discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda."
That is the second opportunity that the public has.
That looks to me as the first, according to the agenda.
Understood. So we wanted the public to know that they did have an opportunity to speak on items.
And I think that should be my suggestion. And other cities have it that way, that there's two opportunities, and sometimes three. You can speak at the end. But at least so that the public knows that they can speak, and we want them to speak on agenda items. And somehow, that has to be in there. And I can get you an agenda copy of another city where it includes it. Maybe we can follow that.
Chair Garibian, committee member Ramirez, I think the clarification was to help the public understand that there are two opportunities. A lot of, oftentimes, people think that under oral communications, they can speak on an agenda item, and at that point, that opportunity has passed. We can consult with legal to see if there needs to be additional language for clarity, but just like Iris mentioned, this is the way that the council and other commission agendas are presented. And the opportunity for the public to speak on an agenda item, which is like action item A, is during the item as you take it. A lot of times, the community thinks that under oral communications, they can make a comment on the item. And so that's why we were clarifying, Iris was clarifying, that if they want to speak on the item, it's, they should present a card to speak under action item. Action items A, 1 and 2, just so that the committee doesn't make a decision, and then they submit a card to speak under oral communications. Oral communications is for items not on the agenda. So, but if you feel that the agenda is confusing, we can bring it up to legal to see if there is room to improve, because the council agendas are presented as such as well.
Yeah. Well, I understand the practice. I just, for this committee at least, I think that we'd like to have a card, and so that the chair knows exactly who's calling, when, why, where, and why. And it's clear to the public that we don't have to say, "Be sure and go and get a card," because if you're going to speak on this item, turn in a card. And that's, seems to me like it, just an indication of that should be on the agenda for the public to know. People, you know, the agencies, they know the practice, but we're trying to encourage new agencies, and often, they may not know the practice. And so I just think it makes it a little bit easier, and maybe easier for the chair as well. So, and it's done. It's not something that the city council can choose to do theirs the way they like. But I think for us, I think it's just the more public comment you have, and maybe when the agencies get this, and they know, the ones that have been here, that they can speak to these items, but there's nothing on this agenda that tells an agency that they can speak to their item, and they're new. So just, that's my suggestion, and actually, that's my preference. But I'm just one.
Just to add to Mr. Ramirez, so what happens? The letter goes out to each agency for today, obviously?
Chair Garibian, once we were notified of the allocations, we actually sent out an email to every single agency that submitted a proposal in December of 2018. Every single agency was well aware of our meeting today, and invited to attend, and encouraged to attend.
And speak.
And speak, yes.
So as long as in the body of the email was given the opportunity that you may do, come and speak and give your, okay. So they were notified of that?
Yes, they were. Chair Garibian, committee member Ramirez, part of the reason why we clarified as well is because in the February meeting, the interviews or their ability to speak, the opportunity to speak was built into the agenda. They all had a time for them to show up and speak, and this was going to be different. And so we wanted to clarify that in order to speak, they needed to submit a card, which is different than how it was done in February.
And in fact, we did have follow-up to the, after we, you know, we made the discussion, we had follow-ups available. So we do, I understand what we're doing. I think it's not a real problem for people that have been here a lot, and, you know, really pretty much control the process, but just for new members, and the public as well.
Okay, so you're going to note for the legal to look into it for next round? Okay, thank you. Anything else? So let's move on to the second item.
So at this point, you're at item 3A1 still, and this is the time for you and the committee to deliberate and decide how the additional funds will be allocated. And there is a spreadsheet on the screen. And to clarify, this is capital...
Mr. Chair, if I may, sorry.
If I may, Chair Garibian, this is for capital improvement. We're going to be starting with that one first.
So who wants to go first?
Well, you start. Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Well, since we have only one request for capital improvement, I think that we might consider that, the Catholic charities.
Well, I, I had a completely different, I had just a question, a general question. I know I see some people in the audience that I'm not, I don't recognize them. I'm not sure what organizations they're representing. Some spoke, but some didn't. So I would want to see if there are other, the public that are here, which organization, if there is a possibility that we can find out what organization they represent. So while we're discussing, at least we know that the organization cared enough to show up, at least to fight for their funds, to sort of, if there is an opportunity, we can do that.
Is that what it takes?
I'm not sure. I don't know. No, I'm just, you know, it's just better, for me, it's better to know who's here, who's not.
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, that would require for them to submit a speaker card.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to extend the meeting, or just, I guess I just did.
Anytime they're going to address you, they would need to collateral a speaker card.
Sorry.
But I don't think the decision is based on attendance.
No, my decision is not based on attendance. I just like to know who they are, who is here, what organization are present.
Salvation Army.
Hello.
That I recognize.
Chair Garibian, if we could ask the agencies present, or the members of the public, to only address you if they come to the podium after...
only address you if they come to the podium after submitting a speaker card.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right. You have a suggestion here? I'm sorry?
All you have to do is scan, and you know who's...
I don't know them. I don't know what organization they represent.
It doesn't matter.
Maybe they're just...
Hmm?
Is it?
No, I just asked a question. We could have not agreed on, I don't know. Anyway, so you have a, you had a suggestion, right? Mr. Ramirez had a suggestion?
Or you asked for something, so I didn't agree.
Okay, oh, that's right.
I'm Carmen Di Baridian. Good afternoon, thank you for having us. Carmen and I are here on behalf of Hamaskein. And since we're up here, we really appreciate the fact that the actual funds ended up being more than what you guys anticipated. So this is actually Hamaskein's first time making this request, and there's a dire need, and I don't use that word dire lightly. So if the committee sees it appropriate to further increase upon the 11,734, is it? It would be greatly appreciated and very quickly allocated and used.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. No.
I appreciate it. Thank you. One more card, Clara Banks.
Good afternoon, everyone, good morning. I'm a little nervous, this is my first time, but I'm representing Asensio. I'm the new director of programs, I started at the beginning of this year. So I'm not too familiar with what we requested, however, I just consulted with our first school director, Rita Campos, and it looks like we did a proposal for 24,000 for outreach, and we were cut down to 10,000. And this first quarter, I can tell you that we continuously go above and beyond our numbers when it comes to meeting our outcome, our program outcomes. However, the cut in the funding would not necessarily hinder us from continuing that program, we would just not be able to reach as many clients or individuals as we would like.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions? You didn't submit a...
Sorry, Committee Member Ramirez, your microphone.
You didn't submit an additional proposal for this added funds?
For the funds that were available, starting Friday? No, we did not.
Okay, any reason why?
They don't have to...
Chair Garibian, Committee Member Ramirez, nobody submitted additional proposals, these are all the same proposals that were submitted in December.
Okay.
So none of the agencies have submitted additional proposals, we're just reconsidering increasing funding to the agencies that had originally submitted a proposal for funding.
Oh, I understand, correct it. That you didn't speak to the new funding earlier, or did I miss you?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Any reason?
No particular reason, besides that I feel like there's, the funding that we, the 14,000 we were cut, is not available. So, but we are, I have submitted applications for the HEEP and CESH, and one of the, under the HEEP application, we did ask for money that we were cut from CDBG to continue that program as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, just thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And good luck for your new position.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm confused over the numbers, you got cut somewhere else?
We got cut in the CDBG funding. We were...
Anywhere else, or just the city? Because it wasn't 24,000, it was 20,000 on this.
I'm sorry, yeah, 20,000.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's the same numbers you're talking, not a different funding.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Okay, all right.
So that's an acceptable request, yes?
What is?
The Asensio's request.
Well, it's the same request they had in the past, we just have extra money to give them.
Well, I understand that, I'm talking in terms of the process.
Oh, the process.
Chair Garibian, Committee Member Ramirez, all of the agencies who had originally submitted a proposal, as it appears, are eligible for the additional funding. Some agencies were able to be here, some agencies chose to speak when we were taking cards, and some came to introduce themselves when one of the committee members requested to know who's out, who's in the audience. So all of the agencies that originally submitted funding that were considered back in February are eligible for the additional funding. So some may be here in the audience, some may have not been able to attend based on their schedule, but everybody who originally submitted a proposal that you considered back in February are eligible for the increased funding.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. So again, just to clarify, if the place was empty, everybody's still qualified, and in some cases, they withdrew, in Arat's case, but they choose, everybody's qualified to get funding of whatever left, extra money we have.
Except the withdrawals, because we didn't...
Except the withdrawals, right. Okay, now deliberation. Mr. Ramirez, you already spoke your piece, you want to change, or you're still sticking to...
No, you know what it was, right? The Catholic Charities.
Catholic Charities, right.
The only one we have.
Well, we have YWCA.
Asensio is not Catholic.
No, no, we have YWCA and Catholic Charities. We have two, Arat pulled, they withdrew there for additional funding. YMCA was not funded, so we have two. We have Catholic Charities and YWCA, Mr. Alvesian.
Well, I just said in terms of, he said they are here to fight for their projects, so I just was going along with it.
Oh, oh, I see. No, I guess that's not...
That threw me off.
I should have mentioned it that way.
That's why I clarified, whether they're here or not, everyone's qualified.
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, there's $51,554 available for the three agencies. Even though YMCA was not funded back in February, the committee can decide whether to fund the 51,000, or part of the 51,000 to YMCA, or YWCA, or Catholic Charities. So there's three agencies we can be working with.
If I'm not mistaken, YMCA was due to technicality of qualification, we didn't fund. Does their qualification change? Or they're still not qualified?
Chair Garibian, it wasn't a matter of qualifications, I think at the time, based on the proposal that was submitted, the committee felt that there was some information that was missing or not clear, and so at the time, the committee decided not to fund that project. Nothing has changed since that meeting, because none of the agencies were asked or allowed to submit any clarifying information or revised proposals. So everything is based on the proposals that were received back in December, which you considered as a committee in February. So nothing has changed. So if at the time, if the committee feels different today than they did at the February meeting, yes, their proposal is still part of the group to be reconsidered.
I see. If you guys remember, why, everybody remembers...
Yes, I remember that they had this partial, and we didn't understand partial, and we called them, and they weren't available, or didn't respond, whatever, but anyway.
Okay.
Do you remember that?
Mr. Ramirez, if you, yes, if you want to...
Well, I would like to reconsider the roof project, and all three of them, then, if that's the case.
Even the YMCA that we didn't find out?
Yes, that's the roof, yeah. According to our explanation, they're eligible, and I was supportive of them anyway.
All right. So you want it equally divided between the three, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I don't know about dividing it, but...
Well, I mean, you have to give us numbers.
Yeah, so maybe priority to one, or the second, or third?
Whatever you choose, it's your desire.
Well, I'd like to hear what the rest of you think, if that's okay.
Committee Member Ramirez, I just wanted to clarify, staff is not saying that their proposal is as is. So it's up to the committee to decide whether you felt comfortable funding the YMCA project. But the fact remains that the proposal was not complete, because it had information that was not clear in your consideration back in February. So I just want to make that clear, that what I said does not mean that they're eligible in the sense of that I, as staff, feel that it's a complete proposal. I just wanted to clarify that their proposal is part of the packet to be considered, but there were reasons why the committee back in February felt that it wasn't, the information that was missing was significant enough for the committee not to feel that you wanted to fund it at the time. So just to be clear.
As I understood it, it was, the decision was the committee, right?
Right.
Regardless of what staff, it's incomplete or not complete, which is one of the reasons why the Y addressed that. But, yeah, on the committee, but there was some in favor, so it wasn't like a unanimous decision, so that's why I thought we should brought it up.
Mr. Alvesian?
Can I make a motion?
How about some discussion before, from all other members?
It's pretty simple. We have 51,000, both organizations, to me at this moment, because we've already funded YMCA and Catholic Charities, we found them, most of their project, or a good percentage of their asked. So I would say, just to be fair for those two organizations, just do 50/50, from the 51,554 divided the two organizations equally, and move forward.
You mean YWCA, not YMCA?
YWCA and Catholic Charities.
All right. So we got Mr. Alvesian's input, Mr. Gazarian?
I would say, based on percentage, that we did fund them, I would go 30,000 for Catholic Charity, and the balance is 21,554 to YWCA.
Okay. Mr. Ramirez, back to you.
That sounds good. I like your proposal over there. If you can make a motion to that, I can support it.
Can we enter that number Mr. Gazarian mentioned?
Sure. To clarify, you want the one that Committee Member Garibian just mentioned?
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so first, anybody else? That's it? First, I would like to thank Arat for giving that opportunity for the other agencies to get more funding, not necessarily you would have get it anyway, but at least you increased, you increased the chances of the other two. So thank you so much, and actually being present personally to do so, it was, it's great to be honored. As far as numbers are concerned, I remember the jobs that was supposed to be done for the YWCA and Catholic Charities, and it's not a, it's something, you know, every penny counts in these organizations, especially, I'm familiar with both of them very closely. I would have liked to keep it equal, but not necessarily it would be equal, because I think YWCA had more needs of it at the time of the, I remember what they submitted for. So, but this is also, I'm okay with this too, because I think we're okay, I'm going to leave it the way it is, so I'll follow this.
Make a motion?
And make a motion?
Second.
Committee Members, Armenian absent, Ramirez?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Alvesian?
Yes.
Chair Garibian?
Yes.
I see.
Hey.
Four.
Okay.
Four.
Next.
The next item is a 3A2 Committee to deliberate and approve additional social services funding recommendations.
Well, good thing we did the interview part, we heard everybody, so all we have to do now, go on the recommendations. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Ramirez?
Still looking at mine. Go ahead. Well, if I can maybe, can we start off with the ones that we had recommended? If we got under the 10,000, or 10,000 and under, or not? Have to consider everybody.
What was that again?
Remember when we said if it came in at 10,000 or less, that go ahead and divide it among these three? So if you wanted to start off with those three and then add, or is there enough funding?
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, it was actually the five of them, and I can go down the list. Originally, it was We've Got Skills, Home and at Menchant Chapter, it was Hamaskein, it was Gen Next, the AGBU program, and then it was Family Promises of the Verdugos. And I think I'm missing one, Door of Hope. Door of Hope was the other one.
Iris, can we just highlight those?
Sure.
But they withdrew, so let's not consider the withdrawals.
Who withdrew?
The Y camp?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's already done.
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, while Iris is highlighting the five that you're considering, I'd like to also bring to your attention information I received today for Fair Housing Program, the Housing Rights Center. We received information from our Housing Division that they will cover the additional cost of that program, it is a requirement on their part. So they will be fully funded at 20,000, regardless if it comes from CDBG or the Housing Division. So they are actually going to be receiving 20,000, 10,000 from us, and 10,000 from the Housing Division.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me show everybody this here.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, then, I would like us to consider ZONE, because they're...
Salvation Army?
Yeah, the program. And I think it's important that we do salvage that program, and they, working with the school district, and the community they serve, I think that it, they should at least be granted. And of course, Armenian Relief, that does this wonderful work, and Catholic Charities, also terrific work that they do. I mean, it's, I don't know what we would do with our, with the number of refugees that we accept and that we take care of, and they do the good work. So those, and then Asensio, we didn't fund the last time, so I thought maybe if we could help them out too. So those are my four, or is it five? Yeah, four.
I am...
Not in terms of funding, just in terms of that...
Agencies.
The agencies.
Salvadisian?
Okay, I'm a little bit confused, Mr. Ramirez, what you, earlier, you had proposed that the organizations that we had decided then, that if there was, the funding was under 10,000, 10,000 or less, we would divide it equally to those five organizations. And then if it was above then, then that we would come to the meeting, as we are today. So are you still suggesting to keep that?
Well, based on the clarification that we got, we did get a clarification that everybody's eligible.
Of course, no, that's not the question what I'm asking. Obviously, everyone is eligible, regardless they're here or not. But you earlier suggested that based on our last meeting, a decision that if the funds were 10,000 or less, we had decided that each organization, these five organizations, as the Door of Hope, Shant, Hamaskein, AGBU, and Family Promise of Verdugos, would equally get whatever the dollar amount was, based on the 10,000 funding. And if it was more, then we would come to the meeting. So you just earlier suggested that we should keep those five, and then add more to it. So are you still suggesting that let's fund those in the base, and then go add more to another organization? another organization to it, or not?
There's four new ones.
It's, I, I says, based on a comment today and clarification from staff, I thought that, well, it's only fair that we consider the others, because ordinarily, I thought our work was done with 11,000 dollars, and we had said 10, no, no big problem. But the clarification says they're all eligible, and they don't have to be here, and all that good, good stuff, so I think I got pretty much informed. So that's, that's why I go with...
Mr. Ramirez, four new ones, or four in addition to the five ones? Because you mentioned four new names.
Yeah, based on what I heard.
In addition to, so total of nine agencies.
No, I didn't mention the other ones, because I think, I think we did good over there.
Yeah, oh, four new, okay, got it, got it. Just want to make sure I understand it. So four new suggestions, okay.
That's...
But that, you know, that's, you, you have three other votes, so...
Mr. Chair, no, that's, I think that's what my question and my misunderstanding was, that you suggested those five, I thought what it was originally, we had decided, you suggested that, in addition to those three other organizations that you added on.
No, I, I, I came up with a new priority.
Okay. All right. Just want to clarify and make sure.
Iris, can I just the numbers of Mr. Ramirez's request? Just the numbers, not the whole line? I guess, Mr. Ramirez, you requested...
What was recommended on February 22nd?
No, no, today's recommendation.
Just a discussion.
Just highlight the numbers on the left. I think, Mr. Ramirez, you suggested Armenian Relief Society?
Yes.
Okay. Just highlight the number one.
Salvation Army. These numbers?
The number one on the left side.
Oh, the numbers, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Highlight the different color.
Yeah.
There we go. And who else, Mr. Ramirez?
Salvation Army, the Zone.
Ascencia too.
And Ascencia.
Mm-hmm. I think you said...
Catholic Charities, Ascencia, Armenian Relief, and Zone, that's who.
Those four, okay?
Those four.
Very good. Now, those are the, Mr. Ramirez's recommendation, Mr. Alves.
Okay. Oh, to me? I would, I would wait to hear from other members, and we'll go this.
Hamas Kain is not part of it?
It's up to you. You can pick anyone, one, or, or 11, or 13.
This is, this is what...
I'm not doing equally. I want to have 5,000 for Armenia's Relief Society.
Okay.
Want me to put that in?
Yeah, put 5,000 for now over there, because Mr. Ramirez hasn't said the numbers, but I assume she meant equally, maybe.
Salvation Army, 2897.
2,890, or 28,000?
2,897.
2,897, okay.
And City of Hope, 2,000.
City of Hope.
I'm sorry, which one?
Door of Hope.
Door of Hope.
Door of Hope.
Help me find it. Okay, here it is, I'm sorry.
Number nine, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much, I'm sorry?
2,000.
Thank you.
And Shant, 2,000, number 10.
Mm-hmm.
And number 11, 2,000.
You were over. Yeah, you were over.
Over by 2,000.
Sorry. Or take off City of Hope, or Door of Hope.
Number eight?
Yeah.
Was 2,000, okay. All right. Mr. Alves. Mr. Ramirez, was yours equally divided among the four, or you have numbers?
No, I, I wanted to keep my, mine in the, what I consider most need, so...
You have figures also for them?
I don't, I don't, I don't do figures. I kind of go with you guys' figures, depending on what you, on who you fund.
Let's hear Mr. Alves.
I mean, there is no such a thing as none of this, or any of these organizations are not qualified, or not worthy, or their job, what they do, it's not needed, or the dollars that are received is not needed, and they can't use. So every single one of them would appreciate every dollar that they, they receive addition to. However, it's such a small number that no matter how you cut it, it's not gonna help any one of them in a major, major league. But I would, I think I would, I would go with what was suggested right now by Mr. Nazarian. I think that that would be okay with me.
Well, for me, I would rather add that more, another 2,000 to, to Zone, or Ascencia.
You want to take it from somebody, put it there?
I would take it from We Got Skills.
See that?
And give 1,000 each to the, to Zone and Ascencia. Where's Ascencia up there?
I, I apologize, Committee Member Ramirez, if you don't mind, I wanted to ask for clarification. I believe I put the numbers in the wrong place.
Right.
Committee Member Gazarian, would you mind telling me which one is incorrect?
Instead of Shant, should be Hamas Kain.
Oh, so instead of 10, is 11?
Yes.
Instead of number 10, is number 11?
In Glendale Youth Alliance, I don't believe you mentioned it, but I do have it there. I think I might have been...
That's wrong, yeah.
That was, I think, I think you mentioned Shant, Hamas Kain, Salvation Army, and ARS.
So it was, is it Shant?
That was on Shant, yeah.
I like the other one better.
Is that, does that look correct to you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what he had.
Thank you. I apologize.
Mr. Ramirez?
Well, you know, I, I didn't support the, the 10 and 11 the last time, and I'm not inclined to support it, and I, I agree with you that they're all in need, but that's why we're required to prioritize. And I just think that our priority at this time, we have so many homeless people, and homeless families, and experienced people all, already doing the good work, and they're needing extra funds, I just think that that's where the extra funds should go. And so that, I'd like that 4,000 to be distributed to the four that I cited as priorities. So all I, I would just give, there's 4,000 there, I would give 1,000 to each of the four that I did. So can you do that?
Should I add another column, maybe, so we can see both side by side? Or do you want me to replace it?
No, just add a column, so, because we have different...
1,000 to Zone, 1,000 to Armenian Relief, 1,000 to Catholic Charities, and 1,000 to Ascencia.
So, sorry, let me see, how do I do this? So Ascencia would get 1,000?
Who else, Mr. Ramirez?
Was it ARS gets 6,000 then, or, no? Sorry. Can you...
2,000 more. Ascencia, do you have there?
Yes.
Do you have the Zone?
How much? I apologize. Can you give me quantities for Ascencia, an amount?
Just add, just add what's there, with, add $1,000 to what's there. So, so Armenian Relief, instead of 5,000, 6,000.
Okay.
To the Zone, instead of 28, it would be 38.
Okay.
And Catholic Charities, what do you have for Ca, oh, you didn't have Catholic Charities?
Oh, it's 1,000.
It's 1,000, you put 1,000 dollars.
You didn't have any? You guys didn't have any?
No.
Okay, and Ascencia, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, okay, you, you, you picked your, your, the youth programs right, so, okay, that's kind of where we're at.
Right.
Is that my 4,000?
Correct. So they had, there originally was $4,000 split between Shant Chapter for We Got Skills and Hamas Kain. We, we distributed those 4,000 evenly between the four agencies you mentioned. Basically, the ARS funding, you added an additional 1,000, and Salvation Army, you added an additional 1,000, so...
Okay. Anyone else, anything? Mr. Avadisian? No? We're done? My turn?
Your turn.
Well, obviously, it's, it's ridiculous, the amount of money compared to the agencies and the need they have. It's so little, and sometimes it just makes me feel sick to know over 11,000, or how important that number is for every agency, and just cutting from one, give it to another, or it's the most hardest thing. I've been sitting here and thinking and thinking, and I've been thinking about it before even I got here, the days before, and I just can't come up with the right answer, who to give and who not to give. So it's extremely difficult. Therefore, I'm gonna stick to my, two, I have two options sitting on my shoulders, the left and the right, and each one is going in a different direction, but I can't, I can't go with any of them, and I'm gonna stick to equally divide between the 13 agencies. That's my say-so. I can't pick and choose, I just can't, and...
That's your job.
Well, I know, but each one of them, it's, it's important. We cut from each single one of them, and if I have to give them, I'd rather stick to our original plan, which was the five agencies that they're new, first time they applied. But yet, I hear fundings cut from, from the Zone, and their need, it's much higher because of the funding cuts they had, maybe the other ones had, we don't know of. I know some of them personally, as far as the job they do, especially the youth programs, because they're limited in grants versus the homelessness, they have other options of fundings from different funding sources, so it's very difficult to pick. But I wish I could just equally divide it to all of them, but it's too small to give it to each one. I mean, it's barely gonna do, no, you don't have to, Iris, enter it now, it's just, it's too small to enter it. So that's a choice, but, but that's also what's $900 gonna do to each agency. Go back to the names, just show the names one more time. So I don't want to keep everyone here forever, and I know these numbers are, we have two numbers now, and two different ones, and I can't choose based on who's present here and who's not. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep the, I'm gonna keep the Hamas Kain fund on that, just color Iris, if you can, color the numbers. Color number 11 for now, and Hamas Kain, and, and Armenian Relief Society, it's already colored, so just color the letter, the verbiage, or whatever it is.
Sorry?
You can just color next to it, I don't care.
Are you doing a new column?
He asked me not to, but it, it's there, the column's there, so once he's ready to give me numbers, I'll put it in.
So let's just do the Zone also, and, and I'm gonna do the Shant Chapter too, because of their program, I remember for the kids, it was a... Since Salvation Army is short this year, we heard of, maybe so are the other ones, I don't know of, so... Let's put the Salvation Army also, and luckily, number eight, I mean, number seven, sorry.
Did I capture all of yours?
It's, it's fine. Yeah, I'm gonna stick to these. So as far as numbers go... Iris, open the other two columns, the F and the G, and close the D and the E. That's good. Okay, so as far as Armenian Relief Society, I'm gonna split them, 5,500. So hopefully, my colleagues will come to the happy middle. The Zone, I'm also gonna split that. So what is it, 3,300 change? And the Shant and the Hamas Kain, split those two between the difference, whatever left over.
With the difference evenly among the other three?
Yes. No. On Salvation Army, between 2,800, 3,800, was it 3,300, 3,400?
3,397.
3,397.
You said 3297?
3,397.
3,397.
And 1,500 on each Shant and Hamas Kain. All right.
I'm okay with that. I mean...
Okay. You're okay with that?
As good as you can get.
I don't think so.
It's very hard. Never is good, yeah. It's hard, it's...
It's hard on your, depending on your priorities, right?
Ours or the agency's priorities?
Yours, you're making the decision.
Well, my priority is putting all 17 agencies, that's, that's a priority.
Can't happen.
I know, that's...
That's, that's the thing, if it can't happen, where the dollars is gonna make more, it's gonna respond more to the, that, the difference, will make a difference, their programs. On the smaller organizations, that small dollar amount will make a bigger difference to their program than on the larger organizations, that small amount will not make as much as, than to their program, or help to their program that the work it is, or the dollar amount is, I think. That's how I'm somewhat looking at it. Then I'm looking at the kids, prioritizing it between the kids, then the adults. In my mind. Make a motion.
So where, are we gonna, anyone who wants to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion on the last column, 1,500.
Is making a motion on my recommendation? Any one second in that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So just to be clear, it would be 5,500 to ARS, 3,397 to the Salvation Army, and 1,500 to Home Minute Men, and 1,500 to Hamas Kain.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Committee Members, Armenian absent Ramirez?
No.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avadisian?
Yes.
And Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries 3-0. No, 3-1, I'm sorry.
What's next?
Next on the agenda is oral communications, I don't have any cards. Item five is committee staff comments.
Just before we go, comments, so it is oral communication, no cards, so we're gonna close that, just to be clear. All right, so staff comments, who wants to go first?
Staff, oh, staff comment or our comments?
Staff comment.
Chair Garibian?
Chair Garubian and committee members, just want to announce that we will be having a Housing Rights, Housing Rights Center will have a tenant workshop next Thursday, 4:30 19, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at Pacific Community Center. Public is invited to attend. It will be information on tenant, tenant and their rights, as well as any other comments or questions they may be having for, from the Housing Rights Center.
Actually, Chair Garubian, members of the committee, we're also scheduled to present the final report now that we have the final allocations. We're scheduled to present the final report on May 7th at 3:00 PM at the City Council, at the Joint City Council Housing Authority Meeting. So we'd like you to add that to your calendars and we will also send you out, send out a reminder of that upcoming meeting. We wanted to bring to your attention today is the kickoff to National Community Development Week. So April 22nd is the kickoff and the City of Glendale is celebrating by posting five really important agencies that do really good work with CDBG dollars this week. And on Monday, we will be, well, I think Iris will pull it up right now. Today, Monday, we've already started posting our YWCA ribbon cutting ceremony and the great work that they do. And that's on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook, so please follow us, like the pages, because it really does raise awareness of this week. And stay tuned, because the Armenian Relief Society, Salvation Army's The Zone, and Ascencia Program, as well as our City of Glendale's Palmer Park Project are going to be highlighted this week with that National Community Development Week. And I think we're gonna add one more, one more bit of information. We're actually working on proposals, this is a staff project that we're working on for our annual, well, our five-year plan, which is our consolidated plan and our analysis of impediments. Staff has finalized reviewing the proposals and we are going to be presenting that to our director, Mr. Bulanikyan, as well as the Community Development Director, Mr. Philip Lanzafam, because it is a joint project with the Housing Division as well as our CDBG section. It is a requirement from HUD that our CDBG program, our Homeless Services Program, and the Housing Division complete these two documents, these very important documents that are due every five years. So we'll give you more updates in August, once we get that information in and we finalize the professional services agreement with the consultant that we choose. Thank you.
From my colleagues, you guys have any comments?
No, I think I'm...
Mine can wait.
Then let me just quickly say first, thank you to the staff, great job as always. And it takes too much work, even though if it's a $10,000 or even a $1,000, still the process is the same, doesn't matter what the dollar amount is. Thank you for everyone who's here, I appreciate your presence and your explanations. Again, it's the size of the dollar, yours pass by and gets smaller and smaller, instead of getting larger, it gets smaller. So we look forward every year to a surprise, to more money. But nevertheless, all the agencies are great, their jobs are great. We definitely salute you for what you're doing and continue doing your hard work. You guys are the ones who actually do the work and, and we really appreciate it. And pass the word out that, you know, anyone else can help you guys out or another agency start, let them know to apply and we'll do our small part to be able to help as much as we can. So thank you and thanks to the council for their direction also, for this year allowed us to open up to more agencies. That's what we had new ones, I think five or six of them, if I'm mistaken, or eight of them, if I'm mistaken, which was great. And we look forward to more agencies coming years as needed and we'll take care of them. Thank you so much. Rejoined. 3:46. Thank you.
Thank you.